All right, welcome to the September 11th, 2014 Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. And Vice Mayor Doug Young has our prayer and our pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have given us. We thank you for all the people that serve us. Give this council wisdom and guide us in the things that we do. Heavenly Father, we remember today, 9/11, and the thousands of people that lost their lives, and the people that serve us overseas, our active duty and retired military. Give us strength to support them, and give them strength to support us. And let us never forget our vigilance in this troubled world. Amen.
Amen.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's good to see everyone tonight. We'll start with our consent agenda.
I was making it up as I was going.
You have several items on your consent agenda. If there's any questions or any items that the city council members have discussion about.
I've got one real quick question. I know we're renewing the agreement with Bob Parks' property for the Rutherford Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that we think this will be the last year that we'll need? Or is this, should we be entering a two-year, I guess is my question.
I think what, you know, the thought would be to extend it for one year, and then come back with a contract amendment where we could extend it quarterly, so that we don't get in a situation where we've got too much of a lease left, where the building's not used, and Mr. Parks might find some, another tenant.
Right, okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, it may be good at the end of the meeting if you'll update us on where we are with the police building.
Yeah, you're glad to.
All right, good question, Mr. Schmuthman.
Hearing no other comments, I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move to approval of minutes for the August 21st, 2014 special meeting, the August 21st, 2014 regular meeting, the August 27th, 2014 special meeting, and the August 28th, 2014 regular meeting. You have the minutes, if you have any additions or deletions.
Mayor, hearing none, I approve, approval for the minutes to be approved. That didn't come out right.
Second.
Mr. Young, Ms. Gels Harris, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
It's going a little quicker with just six here, isn't it, Ms. Wright? Open seat. We'll go to third readings. Consider for passage on third and final reading, ordinance 14043, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 25 and a Quarter, Signs, Sections 25 and a Quarter dash 22, and 25 and a Quarter dash 26, dealing with signs.
Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Young, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move into new business, and consider for renewal a certificate of compliance for Bina Patel, Manish Patel, and Kanari Patel at Stones River Liquors, 208 North Thompson Lane. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is a two-year requirement by the state of Tennessee. This is an ongoing business, and they have met our requirements to issue this certificate of compliance, so I recommend approval.
Okay.
Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Young, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll consider recommendations of the planning commission to schedule public hearings to consider a PRD amendment along Middle Tennessee Boulevard at Vine Street, a PRD amendment south of Salem Highway, and west of Casey Lane, and PUD amendment along Fortress Boulevard and Pocket Creek Crossing. Ms. Adlott?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. During this regular meeting on September 3rd, the planning commission conducted public hearings on the matters the mayor just referred to. After the public hearings, the planning commission discussed the matters, and then took actions to recommend that all of them be approved. These need to be scheduled for public hearings. There was actually very little public participation, although we did send quite a number of notices. These are just all amendments to existing plans, just to make them a little bit more workable for the new developers.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, do you have a recommendation? Mr. Lyons?
Might suggest October the 17th? Oh, I'm sorry, the 16th.
October 16th.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move we set a public hearing October 16th.
Second.
So you want to check your calendars? I mean...
No, is that for all three? Can we, one motion for all three, David?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thanks, Ms. Adlott. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 14R24, amending the 2014-2015 budgets for the Murfreesboro City Schools.
Mayor, I'm gonna handle that item for city schools this evening. City schools this year experienced unprecedented growth. They have had a larger number of students than they had projected. On the budget amendment that's before you this evening reflects that increased enrollment, because much of the revenue of our school system is based on student count. We've seen increases in the state education funds, property tax, local option sales tax, and some other miscellaneous revenues. City schools is also including a fund balance appropriation. The total revenue adjustments are $1,551,104, and that corresponds to the expenditure increase of the same amount. In large part, it was due to the need to hire 22 more teachers. So the increase in revenue is offset by the increase in expenditures, and we're bringing that recommendation to you from city schools.
Okay, you have a recommendation from the city schools?
I'm for approval, now let me, you know, council members, I'm telling you now, you know, we're gonna have to address expenditures and revenues and stuff with the school system. A good thing, pretty much, you know, but as a liaison, I will be, I'm gonna record, public record of saying, you know, we're gonna have to touch this in the next couple of years. And Rob and I, we've had conversations, and it's gonna be different, dealing with them, and like I said, I'm for approval of the minute budgeted, but then we're gonna have to step it up a little bit with our city school systems for a variety of reasons.
And following on what Ryan said, certainly, we look at the budget, we approve the budget not that long ago, and I know that the school system had to understand that we were going to experience growth, so some of this had to been expected. And I'm not, I'm curious as to why we didn't compensate more in the budget that was planned upfront. It's awful early to be seeing an amendment to the budget, I think.
Mr. Schmuthman, let me speak to part of that. You know, clearly, we're experiencing rapid rates of growth, but I think one of the things that accounted for much of the student growth that was not expected was the opening of Overall Creek Elementary. A higher-than-expected number of students from Blackman Elementary left Blackman Elementary to come to Overall Creek. We really didn't have a way to know how many kids would come over, but, you know, I know our, the principal was out actively recruiting in the area, trying to tell a great story about Overall Creek Elementary, and a lot of parents and students decided to go in that direction. I was told that the portables now have been removed from Blackman Elementary, so we did see more students at Overall Creek than we knew, and opening a new school was a little difficult.
I understand what you're saying, Rob, but if, even if we'd done it before the last school year ended, and went to the Blackman Elementary School and found out some feel of how much, how many students were gonna transfer, because basically, the burden of this is gonna be borne by the city now that wasn't being borne by the county, and if there's that many students that transferred, and of course, growth is part of it, which, you know, is a shared expense. But, you know, we understand that there's gonna be growth, but I just, I just, I want the school board to have as much vision as they possibly can, and certainly present us more so with not, not a worst-case scenario, but a more realistic scenario, when, because the growth should not be a surprise to the city of Murfreesboro at this point. And to be this early in the budget and be making amendments to it, I think it's, it's just, it's kinda hard for me to swallow. But I do understand that they need the 22 teachers and everything that goes along with it. So I'll second Ryan's motion.
Yeah, excuse me, I ask?
No, sure. Go ahead, Ms. Wright.
Am I correct in saying that this change and increase in the school budget is coming out of their growth fund, and it's not coming out of the city's funds at all? Is that correct? Is it correct, it's coming directly from their fund balance?
Yeah.
And not our money? I mean, not, I didn't mean to say our money.
Sure.
But the city's?
The city school fund balance is part of what they're using to balance the increase in the expenditures.
So what Mr. Washington is saying, too, that, and I'm correct in saying it's coming out of their fund balance and not the city's, but Mr. Washington is saying possibly next year, it's gonna be on us to help.
Yes.
But this time, it's not coming out of our?
Yeah, and I would predict that next year, during the city schools' request, that they will ask for an increase in the contribution from the city to the city school budget.
They're going to, they're going to, and I can see where it comes from, and you're right, man, and their fund balance is taking a hit for the last couple of years, really. And due to growth, and, you know, some technology things and that kinda stuff, so, you know, I'm just trying to put you all on notice to pay attention, that we're gonna have to step up and do a little bit more for our city school system.
And for the last couple of years, because the city school has not come to us for an increase when they submit their budget, they have been dipping into their fund balance.
They have.
And government regulations require them to keep a certain percentage in their balance, and they are almost rock bottom now, right? But they are...
They're, they're not...
They're real close to that edge.
But they, you know, we need to, we need to have them out.
We need to talk about that, the budget process, if I remember right, too, that part of it, now not the growth part, which was what he's really talking about, but if I remember from June, I left that knowing that basically, they had gone, you know, they've had a burn rate in their, in their fund balance for years that's obviously gonna, obviously gonna go away. I also had a question, I couldn't find it on this second, on the dollars and cents piece of this, but out of the total, so the total is about a million and a half bucks, is that right?
Yes.
And out of that total, so there was a few other things listed in here, you know, the library, the, this support services, transportation, what is this in here about part-time to full-time? How much of a, how much of an impact was that?
Yeah, the bus, the way the rules work now regarding insurance for employees, when employees work, I believe over 29 hours per week, you have to offer them health insurance.
Right.
The bus drivers work, I think, right at that number, so they now have to provide health insurance to the bus drivers, where in previous years, that was not required.
Okay, so is that all of that $66,000 or so dollars? Is that what that is?
I believe so.
Okay.
And they have done some budget cutting on their own, you know, you know what I'm talking about. But there's some issues that we're gonna have to address, or they're gonna have to address, in the coming future, and it's gonna be real interesting, I'm telling you.
Do you know about how much of that'll be reimbursed out of that million and a half bucks? I mean, won't we get none of that?
Well, I think the way the funding formula works, we had a breakfast meeting with Mr. Anderson and Dr. Gilbert last week, and the growth money that's available to school systems doesn't show up this budget year, even though we added a significant number of students. The way the formula works is it will show up in next budget year. So there will be some help in next year's budget.
All right, so one more question. Had we, had we planned a little better, or guessed about the growth a little bit better? Would it have already been in this budget, or would it have not? Because it's not a real number that they're dealing, do they only deal with a real number?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
There's a little bit of a lag in the...
Yeah.
...calculation.
Is the Affordable Healthcare Act part of it something that we should have planned for in the budget, or is that something that's new as well?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Jim Crumway...
That's something that they learned after the budget was adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice, I'm sorry. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Number seven, we'll consider for adoption Resolution 14R25, expressing official intent to reimburse from city proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness for certain expenditures to be incurred by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, in connection with purchase of mowers for use at the city's golf courses. Ms. Lyons?
I'll take that one as well. This is a refunding resolution so that we could reimburse ourselves with future bond proceeds for a rough mower and a finish mower at Old Fork Golf Course. The total amount is $73,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Was this already budgeted, Ms. Ryan?
In terms of, I think that we want to include it in the next bond issue, but it wasn't in the operating budget.
If there's no questions, I'll move for passage.
Okay. Second. Mr. LaLance, Mr. Washington, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
I'd have made on the agenda, would like to recommend Councilmember Eddie Schmuthman be appointed to the planning commission to fill Mr. Gilli's seat.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Gels Harris, Mr. Young, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
And, Mr. Lyons, I'm not sure we had to take, to vote on that, but did we have to vote on that?
I believe so.
Okay.
We did, we just...
You've been appointed with acclamation.
Thank you.
Pardon? I'm sorry. I'll move straight to that. We're now gonna look at beer permits. I apologize, the agenda was a little different on the iPad, and it's on the agenda. My fault.
Mayor, we have one beer permit tonight. This is an ownership change at 4125 Manson Pike for a convenience store. We do still need to get in the building codes inspections, but otherwise, we recommend this application for approval once those are finalized.
Okay. You have one beer application in front of you?
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Okay, you have a list of statements that are, that are, need to be paid?
Move and pay the bills. Second.
Mr. Schmuthman, Mr. LaLance, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Schmuthman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We have several board and commission appointments wanted to read over with you, some that are for future, just the looksee for the first week, and then some appointments. We have recommended appointment for the Library Foundation Board for Marcy Richmond. Mr. Lyons, I'm gonna let you handle the power board here in a second, if that's okay? We have, for future council agenda, recommending Pettis L. Reed for the St. Clair Senior Center And then, we are gonna have Earl Hall bring it up at the next meeting somehow. The application, it's somewhere, I think Ms. Teague has that, but we'll bring that up, so we make sure he'll hit the next, the next pension commission meeting, and then we'll turn the power board over to you.
Yes. For future council meeting, I'll be recommending Gina Ann Rogers for reappointment to the power board, and then, secondly, to replace the unexpired term of Mr. Gilli, recommending Mayor McFarland. That'll be for a future council meeting.
Okay. All right, we'll move into other business from staff or city council, and I've got a couple of items just wanted to share with you. You have a memo on your desk about the city manager evaluation, and we have been working to try to, after our last council meeting, to talk about a new process with the city manager evaluation, and what we found that the same mag, the group that is working on our pay class, our comp plan right now, it was gonna push them to be able to get that ready by the end of the year, or even by November, and that was gonna slow down the class and comp, and I think most of y'all have heard, just like me, that our employees are probably more concerned with that right now, so we didn't want that to happen. So we have come up with a timeline that we feel like that hopefully, first quarter, second quarter next year, that we'll have that, that evaluation in a better state, and it's actually something I think you all enjoy, it's gonna be online, so it's gonna be something that'll be a little more user-friendly, and obviously, the council will get a lot of input in that. But you have a date and a timeline that we have, the distribution of the current evaluation form is tonight. We'll discuss any changes for the evaluation form, if you have any changes that you wanna see happen to the form, we can have that ready for the September 18th meeting. We will approve the evaluation on the 25th of September, and then, we will need to have evaluation forms turned in to Glenn Godwin or Chris McFarland by the 13th, and then, if you wouldn't mind, putting on your calendar that October the 24th at 10:00 a.m. for the city manager public review. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on that?
I'll be out of town.
Are you gonna be out of town? Okay.
I mean, I think y'all can get along without me.
Well, I think it'd be good, we'll...
I'll have mine all ready in turn.
We'll look at maybe moving that date, 'cause I think it would be good for all of our...
To poll all of you to find out a date that would, would work at the end of October?
I think that'd be great. It'd be good for all council members to be there. All right, any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to wish the love of my life, my son, Robert, a happy 30th birthday today. I love you, man.
All right, congratulations.
He's a good guy.
That's awesome.
Should you bake him a cake? Send it to him.
I won't get paid that much.
I've got one more recommendation, would like to get some feedback from, from you guys on. You know, a lot of times, there's, there's lots of good things that are happening within our city, with all of our different department heads, but sometimes, we don't know about it, 'cause we don't get to see our department heads necessarily unless there's business to come up. So what I'm gonna recommend, if it's okay with the council member, is council members to try to get a time during our council meetings that, over the course of the year, that the department heads at least will come to us once a year, and give us sort of an update on what's happening in their, in their departments. And that way, we can, if there's any questions or concerns that we may have feedback from residents, we can let those department heads know, but also, just to know, you know, what's happening. I think it would, what I'm hoping, we can time that maybe with like Mr. Griffith, Mr. Schmuthman, you had a great point several months ago about the paving in the city, and Mr. Griffith had a great answer, but if we can time that with certain things that are happening in departments, that they can let us know what's happening in their department.
Good.
And that'll take, with the amount of department heads we have, that, that's gonna take...
You'll have somebody in front of you, at least one or two every month?
Yeah, I think so. That'll be great. Okay, that's all that I have.
Shane, you, I'm sorry, Mayor, you mentioned the, the public input, and I think there's several people probably here tonight, I talked to a few of you, who are concerned about something that the city is looking into right now, and that would be the planning of the fire and police training center. To be quite honestly, or quite honest in this, I think that the city has done an absolute pitiful job of communicating with the neighborhood, and letting y'all know what's going on in your community. And we, I personally apologize for what's taken place, and I, and I think the city feels the same way, as far as the staff, but not to speak for them. My concern is, is I would like, from the council standpoint, before we go any further with the planning of a training center in that area, that we make sure that we have completed, listening to the public, and had public meetings, so that they can have input, not only as to their feelings about what this center should, training center should be, and how it should be developed, or an alternative plan. I would also like for the city in that, those meetings prior to that, to come back to the council and present to us other alternatives that might be available to us, because perhaps there's some of the activities that are going to overlap, or that might be coordinated back into the development of the new police station. I think there's some things we're talking about at the training facility that could be incorporated into our new police headquarters, as well as, we probably need to make sure that we have explored all opportunities that might be out there, and make sure that what we're planning is compatible with a neighborhood environment, and a trailway environment, versus maybe an industrial area. So having said all that, I certainly opened it up to the council for your comments, but I think that we, before we do anything else with planning on that, that we need to make sure that we have not only communicated with the neighborhood, and much more than just a few feet away from it, the property, because Liberty Valley and Liberty Station, both, I think, will be affected by this, not only from the property values, but the, the quality of life issue. And so, having said all that, I think that it's a good idea from, from a city standpoint to make sure that we've explored every avenue before we give any more presentations on what, what the plans for that property are.
I can assure the council, you know, we do apologize for the breakdown in communicating with the residents. That was a mistake, and we will not make that mistake again. We will begin looking at the public safety training facility, looking at some options, some alternatives, and before that ever gets, before the BZA, there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to review that, comment on that, and help us come up with a plan that is gonna be the best project it can be for, for police, fire, and our neighborhoods. So rest assured, we will be doing some outreach on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. And I think I will tell you, I was at the BZA, you know, that was before our special meeting that day, and I think that we credit when things go well, and I think that we definitely will take criticism, that I think that one of the comments saw that, that morning, and one of the questions was asked, well, how about our notice? and one of the questions was asked, well, how about our notice? And I think that we hold ourselves to higher standards, and honestly, we, we could have done better, so for that, we apologize to the city, to the, to the residents out there, and, and I think that's something that we, as a council, have stressed, customer service, and I don't think it was something that intentionally was done, but it was something that was a mistake and should have been handled better. But I would also like to say, this is a, a good example of, of going through the process, and the BZA quickly saw that and said, hey, hold up, we're, we're gonna hold up on this. I think that's something that the BZA, the, the process was, was, was right, but we will do better, and that's gonna be moving forward with not just this project, but with, with any city project, and, and that will be a standard, I think, that, Mr. Lyons, and I think you know this, that the city council is, is not only asking, but we're, we're saying we want more, more input than, than less, so, you know, we, we, this was a mistake, and we apologize. Any other comments from the council members? Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Crumley, we'll move to other business from staff or city council, I wasn't trying to forget you.
First, let me apologize to the residents of Liberty Valley and Liberty Station. We talked about holding public discussions with them prior to the BZA, and we got in too big a hurry. So it's our fault, we accept full responsibility for not communicating with the residents of those neighborhoods. Just to give you a little bit of history, and then where we're headed now, there were three other sites that we brought to the city council in the summer of 2012 as part of the CIP, all on city-owned property, all of it being on water sewer property, two other sites that we examined on the Coleman Farm. We recommended the site at that time primarily based on the cost of development, that was the lowest of the four sites for the cost of development. That's what we funded in the CIP in 2012. Now, where are we headed now? We've instructed SEC, our engineers, to look at six other sites, two on the Coleman Farm, one on the Jordan Farm, three on private property. We're gonna go back, we're going to try to assess those sites, make sure there's nothing we've missed this time, and then we will bring it back. Our intentions are to have a neighborhood meeting with Liberty Valley, Liberty Station, regardless of whether we suggest going forward on the initial site, just to close the loop with those folks. We're not in a hurry, so that, that meeting may not be until end of October, first of November, but we do feel like we need to keep the faith and hold the trust with those folks. There was one young woman who suggested that there was some sort of conspiracy, and, and I can assure you, that was never the case, to try to sneak anything through on those residents out there.
And, and Mr. Crumley, I think, to, I appreciate you saying that, but also, you know, you, you've got 200 police, or police officers, 200 firefighters, and you guys as a council member know how adamant that those, those employees have been about a training facility, so I, I think that in an effort to rush, you're being pushed in all, all areas, and maybe it's good to sometimes just take a step back and take a deep breath and, and do it right the first time, so thank you for your comments.
And now, on other business.
Before you go, go on, let me, let me make one comment. We do need to go ahead and proceed with the tower, though, because.
We do.
As far as Liberty Valley and Liberty Station's concerned, when police officers respond to your house, the last thing we want them to do is have the inability to communicate back that I need backup, or I need help in this situation. So, and, and that tower is, is, is part of our growth plan, and, and being able to have a police system or a radio system that communicates properly, so we do need to proceed with the tower, but it's going to be no different than any other radio tower or anything.
However, councilman, the tower will move. It will not be on the tract of land nearest to Liberty Valley. The initial site for the tower was more or less where the farmhouse stood in the middle of the property. When we saw that 52 acres, we thought, we'll consolidate, we'll bring the tower in where there's going to be people to look after the tower on a daily basis. But actually, the site where the old farmhouse stood is slightly better for the radio communications network, and that is our plan, is to go forward with the tower at that site, not on the 50 acres nearest Liberty Valley. Now, other business? More questions? At your, at your desk is a memo from me, we're recommending that you approve the low bid of Wayne Belt General Contractor from Murfreesboro for the re-roofing of the old solid waste building in the Main Street complex. That also includes the high bays behind that building that serve as the nightly garage for a lot of expensive city equipment. Total of the low bid was $343,300. The 5,000 square feet in the old solid waste building was identified as a very inexpensive, very quick opportunity to bring some additional space online for the city. The first thought for that is for an information technology training center. As we've made this investment in software, we don't have enough places wired up that we can sit people down to train on that software over the next 12 to 15 months. The building is in excellent shape, however, in this bid, you're replacing the roof, we're going from a flat roof to a pitched roof, it replaces all the heat and air on the building, it takes care of the large sheds in behind the building. This is the second time we bid it, the first time around, we only received one bid, and that was significantly higher than the bid you have in front of you tonight. We received four bids this time, we're recommending to you the low bid of Wayne Belt General Contractor. Any questions?
Hearing none, I move for approval.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Going back to what the, the communication issue with the, your, your public safety people, that is imperative, you know, so today's 9/11 now, and there's a whole bunch of confusion that went on when that happened, and it's tough to, I was at the firefighters' thing this morning, 9/11, the mayor, the fallen was two. When you're in the public safety business like I am, with, with built-to-cell electric and the firefighters and police officers, when you can't communicate, that's, that's a problem. So whatever you all can do to enhance communication between your public safety people, you better do it. Because when that situation happens, whether it's a tornado or whatever it is, it, it's, I've been there, you, you gotta be able to communicate. So Rob, and, and you all in administration, you know, continue to pursue getting yourselves in position where you have the kind of communication you have with your public safety people, police, fire, and M.E.D., because it, it's, if you ever been there, you know, it's, it's tough when you can't talk, don't know where your folks are.
Absolutely. Ms. Lyons, I have one more thing that I had on my list, I wanted to ask the council members sometime in the next, before our next meeting, was gonna ask if you would drive out Medical Center Parkway, there's a, we've had some different conversation, but there's a large apartment complex that's being built on Medical Center Parkway. Several years ago, I forget that, I've gone back through and watched the videos, we allowed a change in policy in the gateway to allow vinyl siding on, on certain areas, and that was talked about.
2012.
Yeah, 2012.
Yeah.
And it was talked about in hard-to-reach areas, areas that could not be seen from the public right away, gables.
I can see some.
Yeah, and so I think we're, I've gotten a lot of feedback on that, and as we talk about communication areas and areas where we may could say that may not be what we thought, I, I wanted to get the feedback of the council members and look at if that's something that we want to allow in the gateway moving forward on future, future developments. So if you will, take a, take a look at that. All right. I've looked at it, and no, is my answer.
You know, I'm not gonna say that there shouldn't ever be an exception, and this was just prior to me becoming on the council, I was at the meeting that night, but the, when they were presenting Hardy Board versus brick construction, and, and it was, it was hard thought through the council back at that time. I mean, it, it wasn't taken lightly that they were deviating from the gateway plan. I think we may have learned a lesson from, from, from what has taken place now, because I think, very much like Rick, I agree, I think that it's, it's a little bit too much deviation from what we expect that area to be, the standard that we hold that area to. And so, so I agree with you, Shane, I think that we need to think long and hard before we make any exceptions to the gateway overlay, and when we do, we need to make sure that we've seen every plan that can possibly be presented that will try and make us understand this, what, what the finished product will look like.
And this is not to pick on this individual development, 'cause I think from talking to planning staff by the intent of their plan book, they have followed the plan book, I think that's what we have, we have seen, but I, there, there may be some ambiguity in hard-to-reach places that what's hard to reach for me may be not as hard to reach for some other people. So I think that's something we need to discuss, and, Mr. Lyons, if you wouldn't mind, on the next council meeting, we can put that on the agenda to, to discuss.
We'd like to.
All right. Happy birthday to your son. Thanks, everyone, for coming, and if there's no other business, we'll stand adjourned.